Danny, how are you, sir? Good, good.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Good.
Check yourself.
What do you see and what do you get?
Good.
Go home.
I'll change.
I probably need to.
Check, Doc Scott.
No.
No.
All good.
He said, he said.
Are we at the five?
It's not in the office.
I see.
All right, we got it. We're good.
I just wanted to.
There he is.
What is it?
Worried about you.
Worried about you.
You got more? I said, I had to see. Three hours, there's cars out there. Make sure you go upstairs.
No, we went to get the new traps.
Oh, that's right.
So, I just got back. And I'm trying to go. It's going to be a great show.
Hi, Deborah.
Hi, how are you?
I stopped by on Saturday.
Word for word.
They knew your name.
Oh, yeah, they know me real well.
Don't count on that. I did have to do that once. It was a lot of work.
That would be a lot of work.
Can bring back much paperwork?
I got that.
My statements here.
No, I have not. Not yet. Yeah.
Rachel?
Yep.
Is Rosa one one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she's right there. He's there.
Good. Wait about it. Everybody wait.
You guys finally get to see the bottom half of my face.
Yeah, that's right.
Hope you can't say that.
I'm pausing up. I can't see.
I hear, I hear.
I've got six clocks. I'm gonna go ahead and let's call a meeting in order this January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular council meeting. Let's take a couple of minutes, please, silence. Thank you. Chief, may I just say in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Willie.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Are you standing up? Chip Van.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Danny.
Here.
Did we have a little form? First thing on with due to tonight, shouldn't take well into the election of officers. Normally lawyer, prosecutor, starting his side. Don't, don't look at me that way.
All we need is a, we just need a, if there are any nominations for president.
Okay. I remember you.
Hi, guys, said Gal.
Got a haircut, didn't you?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I cut it a lot.
Okay, we have one nomination. A second, okay, we have a second.
So, we have a.
That's same as motion. We got a motion in a second. Let's, uh, roll call vote, please.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Chip Van.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll take nominations now for vice president, please. I'm over to Shane Davis.
I'll second that.
Got a motion second for vice president. Roll call vote, please.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Danny.
Aye.
Chip Van.
Yes. Got approval of the minutes from our December tenth regular council meeting and the twenty-third of December. Everybody's got copies. Karen made sure. I like getting out early like she does. And have copies, any questions or discussions on the minutes?
We have a audience question on the twenty-third minutes.
Are we?
Question regarding the twenty-third.
If you will, introduce your name.
Yeah. Hello, I'm Edward Willenty. I'm with Decker Lawyer and Maynard, represent Pendleton Development LLC. We just have a quick question regarding the minutes on the twenty-third. Appears from your town calendar that there was a special town council meeting on December twenty-third, the minutes that we're voting on today. We're voting on today. And, you know, we're fairly diligent in checking through your posted online agendas. We did not see this agenda posted in advance to twenty-third meeting and currently the agenda for this meeting still isn't on the website. So, we like an official comment on where the best place to find these agendas in advance would be and where the most accurate sources of information are regarding town and planning commission meetings.
Are online. A list online, schedules online of the year.
The, uh, there are minutes listed online and there are.
Talk about minutes.
And there are agendas.
Schedules, the agendas, broken by the council, the planning, everything.
Yes, and we check that quite regularly. As of five fifteen this evening, there was no agenda posted for the December twenty-third meeting, whose minutes you're voting on this evening. Yeah.
Edward, what does that have to do at all with the minutes being passed by the council?
I, I don't object to this being passed by the council, but I'm trying to find the right time to bring to attention the council here that, that we'd like to be able to see these things in advance and, and get them online. I, I don't think that we have any objection to the minutes being passed, but just trying to find the right place here to, to ask that question. I believe they were still posted here on Town Hall. Correct? Well, that was our question. Town Council. And for other minutes or other meetings, where would be the most reliable place for those?
Town Hall. Yeah. Single track. I'll tell you where it is.
Well, I appreciate that. I think that was our only concern. We didn't, we didn't have a concern regarding the contents of the minutes. All right, Jeff has.
Any other comments, questions about the December tenth and December twenty-third minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December tenth and December twelfth, for the twenty-third, excuse me.
I have a motion to approve both minutes. I'll second that. I'll lose second. I have motion to approve the minutes. Roll it, roll call vote.
Danny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Chip Van.
Hi.
Tracey's report for the month of December.
Yeah, I think the bulk scene, the pay vouchers and everything. For federal fund, we're in good shape. Of course, it's seven hundred fifty thousand there. Uh, one thing I'd like to talk about if you pass those down. Many of you that know me know I'm pretty shy, so the last month I kind of come out of my bubble and did some knocking on some doors and with the help of Tracy Dodd, that works in our, uh, Philly office and runs it, does a fine job. We were able to get donations to help citizens in town that were having trouble with their heat bills or water bills, electric bills, to the tune of thirty-four hundred fifty-two dollars. And we took care of about twenty-five different families and made their Christmas look nicer. And we would like to continue this if anyone would like to make a donation. Everyone that made a donation this, uh, in November, December, we didn't have one person that wanted to be acknowledged. Give them the money, help people that need help. And Tracy does a great job of telling me and who needs the help, and we try to get it for them. So, just want to thank her for the good job and thank the people for making the donations. And that's it. Any questions? I would like to wish my daughter a happy birthday today. That's it. Thank you.
Questions on the Port Treasure report?
Take the motion to approve the Port Treasure report. All set?
Uh, roll call.
Bob Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Danny. Chip Van.
Yes.
How are you?
We're good. You?
Wonderful. Well, first of all, this is my first council meeting, so hold applause. Um, first of all, I'd like to start off by thanking Chief Moore for what he's done with me last month of the transition. He's been a great asset for myself as well as for the fire department. He's not stepping by no means, uh, so letting fully up with that. I've cast in with some other, uh, positions and jobs, duties in the fire department, so he's gonna be my red keeper. So, I'm gonna utilize his knowledge, uh, for what he's done over the last four years or so as a chief's position over several years, his assistant chief spot. So, he's not going anywhere. So, with that being said, uh, my transition's been going. We've not had any hiccups so far. Talk about the run totals for the month of December of last year. As you can see on there, it was forty-one responses for the fire department. And it's broken down in individual response areas. For the total runs for twenty dispatched and an incident was created from the dispatch center was fifteen hundred and forty-three runs. That was actually dispatched for the fire department and the ambulance. It's a combined total, uh, that was being sent out, um, from the dispatch center to the fire department, the ambulance service. With that being said, going forward from this point forward, I've been working with the town's inspector Brett Madry to, uh, help him out as well as he's assisted me in the new businesses. We're doing pre-plans of all the homes that's going in, uh, any of the commercial structures that's being built. I'm doing a life safety inspection. During my previous job at Anderson Fire Department, I was a chief inspector for a while, uh, so I've got background from the state certification on inspections. That's one thing that I'm gonna start with the fire department is do business inspections, uh, to make sure all the life safety codes are met, exit signs are illuminated, fire extinguishers are checked and stuff. Make sure all the doors are not blocked and locked and stuff like that. So, that way we make it safe as possible for the community and the people that are patronizing the businesses and stuff. So, that's kind of one of my big goals for this year. The second thing is, is trying to figure out, um, going forward with the department. As you've seen on Facebook, we've been hot and heavy of posting stuff that we've done. We had Who's Your Fire coming in last week and did a demonstration with an app, uh, a ladder truck, an aerial truck that they had for, uh, to show off. Not that we're gonna get one, but here within the next, uh, couple of years or so, we're gonna have to start pursuing another vehicle of some sort, um, whether it be a ladder truck or an engine, just depends on the way the community's growing, uh, it's kind of where we're going. So, to see all the technologies being changed around and stuff, so they, uh, were gracious enough to come down one night and, uh, show us that ladder truck and stuff, so it kind of gives us an idea of what to look for in the future and stuff. So, with that, I want to thank you guys for your support, uh, over the last twelve, thirteen days or so since I took office. I'm gonna open up any questions. Comments, concerns?
Let me, I'm a little bit. Yes. I'll put a little watch you too. Been a lot of discussion for the last year. We found like not numbers, when I say numbers, using the best values with the tax caps and the circuit breakers and everything, there's six different scenarios, the way we sit, ask Baker Taylor to do for us. And as of a week ago tomorrow, we, that would be myself and township trustees along with Scott Hall, the president of the council in Ingles, have decided to postpone forming the fire district at this time. And we're just gonna do some good R work, so people understand why we need fire territory, what is a fire territory, what's circuit breakers, everything. She, no dying, has a lady who does their Facebook page. We're gonna start there. And when I say start there, as far as just hitting the word out, explaining that it's a volunteer department, the town's growing, and get it out there. And once we know the true assessed values for all four entities, then we'll get some good numbers to see how it's gonna affect individuals and businesses, schools, library and the park. So, at this time, uh, this trip ain't gonna be a PR thing. I think. About this, what we need to do and should do. Somebody's got questions, get ahold of me, chief, uh, Strick Gaskell from Alcrad Township trustee, Valentine, Green Township, and Scott Waller from. Just before, you can also pick this guy up, Steve Danny, because he's been in the meetings with them. Just want to get that out.
Anything else? I would just like to say welcome aboard, congratulations, and, uh. For the work.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is police, uh, chief bar community, as he will not be here tonight. He's still, he's out of quarantine, but he's still got real terrible bad coughing. Steroids, so he's, he's still not feeling good. Judge Gus.
Yes, sir. As you know, court was not held in January, and we're still iffy as far as what's gonna happen yet in February. Correspondently, the area law enforcement have significantly cut back, so that's modified the amount of work that we've had to do. We still are taking care of the phone calls that are coming in and everything else. The setting for trial is just gonna have to wait for a little bit longer till we make the determinations, how best to handle it. We do have some new equipment coming through requests of the state to help us with our Zoom, Zoom capabilities. We had to have a three-way Zoom with the state, with prosecutor, and now with that locally. So, we've been taxed as far as to make sure we had enough equipment, but hopefully that'll be taken care of before our next court. Any questions?
Comments? Thanks, Judge.
I don't have much other than what's on the report. Just kind of wanted to highlight that the new security cameras are in on the new restroom building, so that's just an added measure of safety for both users of the park and for our property there. So, that's, that's a good thing. And you may see some piles of wood laying around. We're doing a lot of tree clearing right now, so we're just stacking things up right now so we can keep moving along, but those will all be cleaned up come spring. So, no worries there. Any questions for me?
I have a comment. Say that I was really, uh, happy to see all the lighting for Christmas in the park. We continue that, because that was just, that just cheered me up every time I drove through the park.
Yeah, the community did an awesome job of coming together and getting that and everything.
Fortville, last week eating and table next to me, people mentioned it and how beautiful it was. They drove up here to see it, so that's good.
Good.
Tony mentioned before about the wood attracted, uh, most of the rocks.
Yes.
Cleaning that up. Do you know what that entails? Or you're gonna, you gotta clear up the whole thing, or you're gonna?
We're not gonna clear cut the whole thing. We're using vegetation tech, the company that did the utility clear. They did it on the ground, they'll mold up, and so it'll look like, uh, looks like under the utility ones right now. And then after that, we'll assess, what it's dead or dangerous, that's still standing, and then they're getting that on the ground. This is just gonna kind of clean it up on the ground so we can see what it actually looks like in there.
Yeah.
But.
The invitation should have sounded everybody that ever does anything with it.
In the flights of the north parking lot.
Yes.
Should be pretty.
Right, yeah.
I was gonna ask if you need a drink or pee or any of the things.
About people operating there.
It was looking fun. I plugged it in and screwed everything all up and had to start all over again. I'm trying to put everything in here and see if it, if it's stuck to the truck or something.
Hear you on the mic. We got it. We got it.
Yeah, comments or questions for our?
Thank you. Thank you.
But dog.
Yes, sir. I'll be shorter this time. I feel the pressure. You're older than me. So, uh, we had two, two COVID employees, uh, two employees that had COVID in the last thirty days and one family exposure, continuing compartmentalization practices. The, uh, reliability program, uh, just a reminder, they're switching down to traditional tree trimming versus what they call the mowing. They started out there at nine. And we've got no complaints. I hope you have had no complaints so far, uh, on that. People seem very happy to me. Did team help the, the park prepare, uh, a, uh, at the discharge point into Fall Creek for the pond? Oh, wait, that's the second thing. We got two things like that. What I want to talk about, the guys are doing some work on State Street, uh, repairing collapsed stormwater line, um, they're across from Adams Street. It's a pretty significant discharge point. So, you're gonna, they started doing some work this week, and you'll see them continue on, may get some complaints about traffic flow issues. We'll try and be out of there during the rush hour. The stormwater fee study was presented to the stormwater board last night. Want to go to the next slide? And then, uh, just, uh, hats off to the electric department. In the last thirty days, they put in two miles of line out there at the develop, uh, the developments that we have going. And then I'd like to thank the street department for, uh, and the parks department, we worked together to fix the clogged discharge line from the pond, and the pond almost was about ready to overflow. And then later this spring, we're gonna work on, um, the seawall there where the sidewalk goes along the pond. Think we may have some, uh, serious problems underneath there. And then, um, the water department worked hard along with, uh, Tracy on the, uh, water audit this, uh, this month, uh, well for the year. So, um, we've got some issues we need to work through on that, but I think Justin did a good job, uh, getting the, the information to our, to solve the health system report to get. That's all I have, other than the planning department. Rachel, did you want?
Um, we kind of have our yearly summary of probably building permits per issue, so last year compared to this year, we're down on building permits. However, the estimated cost of improvement, um, has gone up or the fees collected have gone up. And last, two thousand nineteen is a hard one to compare with because we had the tornado, and then we also issued a permit for the sports complex, which, for the wellness center, which was a big one. However, you, you look at the new homes, we had fifty-nine new home permits pulled this year compared to only fifteen in two thousand nineteen. So, we are, we've been very busy, of course. Uh, you can also see kind of our year-to-date total grant money that planning brought in, and we were at about a twenty percent match on any grant that we brought in. That was kind of our average on how much town money we actually had to spend for the one point seven, almost one twenty-eight million that we brought in. And then, of course, just some updates on what all of our boards and commissions have been up to. And if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Good work on the grants, sir, Rachel.
Thank you.
I have a comment. I'd just like to tell Rachel that with my, my first year on the council, every time I call or text or ask you a question, you have been on top of it a hundred percent, and I just really appreciate that from the staff of town, and I just wanted to say a big thank.
Rachel, the dispute on, for this year, I mean, a great, uh, three hundred trees planted last fall, because of the town's park.
I don't know if they'll top the three hundred and fourteen trees that we planted in one day, and I'm sure Craig would not be pleased with me if we tried that again. We have so many look hates we gotta do for that, but we do have grant money left over from V and R to do tree planting, so I'm kind of waiting to see. I do have some trees that I know we need to replant. We're gonna do a first wave in the spring and then hopefully a second wave in the fall again, just not three hundred.
Yeah.
But as much as we can with the money that we have left over.
Good. Any other comments or questions for any of the department? If not moving on, uh, new business, special events, all things related. Yes.
Okay. So, it's a minor changes that incorporated the language for COVID, and then there might have been a couple other huge changes, but all we're doing is just read, adopting that language.
So, what's really changing? I mean, that's a question I got.
It's, it's, you know, somebody have a copy.
It's right here on, on Google.
Yeah, it's the paragraph at the bottom.
It is section health, the state of Indiana executive order and local health department compliance approval as required.
Okay, so it's nothing?
No. I knew, I knew, um.
I know a year or so, especially. I knew, I knew, I know a year or so ago, special event policy was discussed heavily and I just didn't remember.
Nothing else has changed, just the COVID related stuff. We thought we needed that in there just to say, you know, you do need to follow whatever our local guidelines are.
I can answer the question now when they ask me. Scott, is anything relevant to ADA comment? Do you have any discussion on this? ADA complaints? That's a question I don't know.
No, I don't remember anything. I don't think we've changed anything on that.
I don't know if you have, yeah, any reference to that within a report or not.
Well, Rachel's our ADA coordinator. So do you remember anything?
Not in this policy specifically. Whenever we're reviewing the plans, when someone approaches us about it, we do look and see and we make note that, you know, make sure if you're on the sidewalks in the downtown, you have to have five foot wide clearance. So we kind of talk about that with the event organizers when they come in. And if we see an issue when we're at the event, we let the event organizer know that as well. It's on one hand, difficult to identify anything that could potentially be an ADA issue. So we kind of tell them those bits and pieces and then if we see something, we.
Okay, thank you.
And then just so you know, as we reconstruct and repair, we constantly are updating sidewalks that are full or need to get a five.
We're in progress. Okay. I got to ask this question. Hopefully figured it out here. On this revision, it says resolution number R21-01. Last night's stormwater meeting, that was 2021-01. So if we double up here, R21 makes a difference?
The resolutions for town council are separate than resolutions for the stormwater board. So you guys have your own numbers and naming system for resolutions that need the stormwater board. So you guys might have 16 resolutions this year. The stormwater board might only end up with one or two.
Okay. All right.
So that'll be their resolution. They'll do the public hearing. You'll do an ordinance change on the stormwater.
Okay, on this resolution, R21-01, any questions or other comments? If not, I have a motion to approve or not approve. So moved to approve. I'll second that. Shane, Bob, first and second. Willie?
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Jeff Bab.
Aye.
Resolution R20-01 is approved. Next thing on the agenda is court and commissions. I'll see these out so it can be easier. I've already given a copy of this to the clerk's office, so that Don do it, etc., and let's just try to write all this down. I'm, I'm not going to read through every one of these that are in municipal executives. The only ones that I'm really going to talk about, some ones we got to vote on by the council, that's the redevelopment commission. I recommend Steve and Dave stay on the RDC. The RDC is a one-year appointment. So I need motions to approve or not approve my recommendations on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll second that. Yeah, I've got a motion to approve, a second to approve. Willie will call those, please.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Jeff Bab.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
These are approved. The only other one that we got to is the utility rate advisory board. It's Tim Pritchard being reappointed. My recommendation, need a motion to approve or not approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve temperature with the utility rate advisory board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Tim Pritchard. Full call vote, please.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Jeff Bab.
Aye.
Utility rate advisory board. Let me make one comment. There's a lot of hours, I shouldn't say hours, people that want to be on boards and we're lucky here in town that people take the time to be on these boards because they're very important. There's a lot going on in town. Made it easier for me to appoint people on it because the people volunteering want them to be on. So that's good. Any questions from the council on the boards and commissions? Pretty straight. Oh, I know one. BZA up there where you'll see it's, second one is Amy Parker. You need to write that in. Everybody on the boards I have talked to and the ones that didn't want to come back on the boards, I talked to. Because I, I just think we need to do that with somebody. Any other comments? Boards are, boards and commissions are approved. Something I'd like to bring up is that's all the new business. I think tomorrow is Linda's last day in the Park Treasurer's office. She's been there 24 years and retired. Tomorrow, is that right, Will?
That's correct.
And I just want to try to get her to come. All of you know, she's not much about talk. So she's decided not to come. That's fine. But I just want everybody to know that I appreciate in the 12 years I've worked with her. She'll answer any question you give to her. She's helped me a lot in 12 years I've been up there. So.
I'd like to ask everybody to stop by and say bye to her at bar, if they would, please.
Any other public input?
Jay-Z, you had your hand raised. Would you like to see?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you state your name and your address?
My name is Jamila Zafar, 6108 West Foster Branch Drive, Pendleton, Indiana. I tuned in late and I missed who the election of the officers were for A and B, president and vice president.
It's Chet Bab and Shane Davis. Chet Bab is president and Shane Davis is vice.
Okay, thank you.
Any more, Rachel? At that point, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. I've got a little presentation for you. No, you can clap my hand.